Good evening. The Planning Commission meeting of March 5, 2025 is called to order. The Planning Commission meeting is being broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6, and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. Meetings are also streamed live in high-definition on the city's webpage, glendaleca.gov/live, on youtube.com/myglendale, and on Apple TV Roku and Amazon Fire devices using a free app called Cablecast and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. Meetings are also archived on the city website for viewing anytime at glendaleca.gov/Agendas. For public comments and questions during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100. City staff will be submitting the questions and comments in real-time to the appropriate person. Current Planning Commission agendas are available by visiting our website at www.glendaleca.gov. So we'll start with first welcoming. We have a new Commissioner, Mr. Henrik Nazarian.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And congratulations to Ms. Fuentes and Mr. Krocjan for being reappointed. And with that, we will get into roll call. Board Member or Commissioner Krocjan?
Here.
Commissioner Fuentes?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Nazarian?
Here.
Reports regarding posting of the agenda. The agenda for the March 5, 2025, regular meeting of the Glendale Planning Commission was posted on February 26, 2025, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes, but we will be continuing that until the next meeting as the minutes were not included with the packet online. And as it's the first meeting of the year, we're going to move on to election of chairperson and chairperson pro tem. Ms. Fuentes?
Is it open now for nomination? I'd like to nominate Commissioner Stephen Krocjan for chairperson.
I second that.
All right. Can I have a roll call vote? Board Member Krocjan?
Yes.
Yes.
Or sorry, Commissioner Fuentes?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Nazarian?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And now can I entertain a motion for a chairperson pro tem?
Yes. I would like to nominate Commissioner Fuentes for a chairperson pro tem.
All right.
I second that.
All right. And we'll go on to roll call vote. Commissioner Krocjan?
Yes.
Commissioner Fuentes?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Hi.
And Commissioner Nazarian?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Motion passes, so we'll carry or have a slide on over.
Do we need to?
Oh, that's the wrong.
Oh, the resolution.
Do I move this thing?
Yeah, that's fine. We should have the, oh.
There's the resolution.
If not, I can give you.
This right here?
Yeah. We're at oral communications.
Thank you. And with that, we'll continue the Planning Commission meeting. Next, we have oral communications. Do we have any oral communications today?
No cards and no public access. No oral communication.
Okay, so we'll move forward to Board and Commissioner member comments. Commissioner Fuentes?
Chair, Chair Stephen. We have an invitation for, it's called Celebrate Uniqueness. It's a festival of international food, songs, dances, music, arts, handicrafts, name it. It's free and open to all, and this is a collaboration by the City of Glendale, YMCA of Glendale, and the foothills, and the different communities of Armenian, Korean, Filipino, Latino, and so on. We will be holding the event on Saturday, March 22, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the YMCA of Glendale, second floor at the Gymnation. Again, Celebrate Uniqueness, join us. I'm inviting the staff and my fellow commissioners, and this is open for the entire community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Fuentes. Do we have any other Board or Commission member comments at this time? Okay. And with that, I don't see that we have any old business, so I'm going to continue on to new business. Item 707, North Pacific Avenue, it looks like this item's going to be rescheduled and is now being taken off the agenda and re-noticed for a later date.
That is correct. The new notices will have gone out for the March 19 hearing, so it'll be coming up soon.
Understood. Thank you for that. And with that, we'll move to new business, item B, Citywide PGPA 211-9840. The city is revising its 2003 safety element to include updated information on natural hazards such as wildfires and floods, as well as evacuation and emergency preparedness and responses. So I believe with that, we have a staff presentation.
Mr. Chair, before we go into that, I missed my turn here. Normally, when we have a new commissioner, you know, I like to hear their kind of background and then their comments, joining the commission.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Do I need to administer any change for the process of the meeting to go back to that, or we can just hear the commissioner's comments?
I think we can just hear the commissioner's comments.
Okay, thank you.
I almost thought that I got away with that, so.
Yep.
So I'm Henrik Nazarian, resident of Glendale for 27-some years. Engineer by practice and by education, been doing engineering for most of my life, almost 30-plus years. Some notable project that you'll see around LA County and other places is my work, and without going to more detail, this is the time in my career and personal life that I decided I want to slow down a little bit on the career and just pay more attention to community and hopefully serve with my experience and what I've learned over 30-plus years in engineering and development, hopefully I can serve this commission. So that's my goal.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, Commissioner.
What discipline of engineering?
I'm civil engineer, so a couple of my projects that you probably heard is the SoFi Stadium and Clippers Arena, so those are my works.
Wow.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll continue the meeting, and with staff, I believe we have a presentation on our 2025 Safety Element update.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Pro Tem Krocjan, and welcome, Planning Commissioner Nazarian. And again, congratulations to Planning Commissioners Fuentes and Krocjan on your reappointment. It's good to have you back. With that, I would like to turn your attention to the PowerPoint presentation. Okay, there you go. This evening before you is the 2025 Safety Element Update. This is an amendment to the general plan. The Planning Commission is charged with reviewing the proposed amendments and providing comments and making a recommendation to City Council. You are not making a decision on the safety element this evening, you are just providing a recommendation to City Council. I would also like to take a moment to thank Ringcon, who were the consultants on this project, along with staff, and also to Kittleson and Associates, who provided the emergency evacuation memo. So with that, there we are. Now, this is just a high-level overview of what a general plan is. The City of Glendale's general plan is a long-range plan for the city's future. The general plan includes various topical sections, and these are called elements. Glendale currently has a total of 10 elements, which include the mandatory elements required by the state law. That would be housing, land use, circulation, noise, open space, and conservation. These are combined into one element for Glendale, and safety. The city also has elements for air quality, community facilities, historic preservation, City staff is in the process of updating six of our 10 general plan elements, and we have the opportunity now to make sure that all of these elements are coordinated and consistent with one another. The element updates include the safety element, which is before you this evening, comprehensive updates of the land use element, and the mobility/circulation element are currently underway, as well as the development of a new environmental justice element. We also have the open space and conservation and recreation element updates that are slated to begin this spring, once State Council approves the consultant selection. All of the information regarding these updates have been posted on the city's website at The safety element was first adopted in 1998, and it's comprehensively updated in 2003. The safety element seeks to identify and reduce the potential short-term and long-term risks associated with hazards that are present in Glendale. These risks can include anything from earthquakes and landslides, to hazardous material, to even dangerous animals and plants. Recently, the state of California has updated the requirements of what needs to be addressed in the safety element, and Teresa Santalina, the principal planner, will expand upon these further.
Thank you, Vilia. Good evening, Commissioners. City staff and our consultants have been working on a comprehensive update to the safety element over the past year. Tonight, we'll be taking the commission through the changes that we are recommending. So why update the element now? Well, over the past few years, the California Legislature has passed several bills that require updates to safety elements to address climate change impacts, mitigate and prepare for wildfire events, and build more resilient communities. These new requirements intend to help agencies prevent increased hazard risks and enhance emergency response and evacuation. Just to point out a couple of these relevant bills, we have SB 379, which requires that the safety element include climate adaptation strategies and that cities prepare climate change vulnerability assessments. We also have AB 747 and SB 99, which require the identification of fire hazard severity zones and an analysis of evacuation routes. To address these legislative requirements, the city has prepared specific technical studies and developed policies that address vulnerabilities to climate change and wildfire hazards, as well as analyze and strengthen emergency evacuation preparedness. The Climate Change Vulnerability Assessment, or CCVA, is included as Appendix B of the safety element, and the emergency evacuation analysis is included as Appendix C. The CCVA has also been prepared as a background document for the pending climate action and adaptation plan and the new environmental justice element. Having the same technical analysis underpin multiple required guidance documents will help to ensure that continuity and reduce conflicting recommendations within our documents. Getting into the climate change vulnerability assessment, the CCVA evaluates climate change impacts relevant to the city and identifies social vulnerabilities or populations that may experience greater impacts to climate change, as well as physical vulnerabilities such as natural and recreation resources, infrastructure, and critical services that may be most vulnerable to impacts. It identifies and categorizes risks to populations and locations within the city based on exposure and sensitivity to climate change, as well as adaptive capacity. This allows vulnerabilities to be identified and mitigation and adaptation measures to be developed. Mitigation measures from the CCVA have been included as policies and programs within multiple sections of the updated safety element, particularly within the new climate change section. And now, I'm going to hand it to Senior Planner Dennis Joe to provide further information on the emergency evacuation analysis.
Thank you, Teresa. As Teresa mentioned, an emergency evacuation analysis was prepared in response to new legislation. Oh, pardon me. The purpose of the analysis was to study the transportation system for capacity constraints, identify potential areas of greater congestion, and enhance traffic control measures during an emergency event. The analysis evaluated two evacuation scenarios, the first one being a wildfire scenario, which would be located at the Verdugo Mountains or San Rafael Hills, either or, on the east side of the city, and a landslide scenario at the San Gabriel Mountains, which is on the north portion of Glendale. And based upon the analysis findings of these hypothetical two scenarios, which are likely, strategies were formulated to identify potential resiliency improvements to roadway capacity, improvements to communications, assistance to vulnerable populations, public education, and resource management. So what is new and what sections have changed since the previous amendment of 2003? As a quick roadmap to the following slides, staff will provide a brief overview of the changes to the following sections, which include seismic and geological hazards, flooding hazards, fire hazards, disaster preparedness, recovery, and emergency response, and includes minor updates to the hazardous materials, terrorism, civil disturbance and crime, and dangerous animal and plants. And the safety element update has a new section, as Teresa had mentioned before, which is the climate change section. So moving forward, revisions to the seismic, geological, and flooding sections, updates were included within the local condition sections of each of these topics, and include policies and improvements, policies to improve resiliency for seismic and geological hazards such as monitoring slope stability near evacuation routes, upgrades to storm water systems, in coordination with the LA flood control. And to touch up on fire hazards and climate change, I'm going to turn this back to Teresa.
Thank you, Dennis. The fire hazard section has been significantly updated to address state legislation amid increasing frequency, intensity, and severity of wildfires in California. Within our safety element, this includes updates to the overview and local condition sections, including incorporation of the CAL FIRE designated fire hazard and very high fire hazard severity zones, as well as the identification of local responsibility areas. An updated map, Plate P3, identifies these areas and critical city facilities, including those facilities that fall within those hazard areas. As the commission can see from this slide, the mountainous areas of the city are located within the very high fire hazard severity zone. Additionally, multiple policies and programs have been written to mitigate fire hazards in a variety of circumstances, to address possible service disruptions, and to enhance civic engagement and develop meaningful partnerships. These updated policies and programs focus on wildfire prevention, preparedness, and response, and are based on the California Attorney General's wildfire guidance, CAL FIRE's general plan safety element assessment, and recommendations from CAL FIRE and the California State Board of Forestry and Fire Protection. Our new climate change section examines the possible impacts of climate change in the city based on the analysis that was done in the CCVA. Impacts in Glendale are anticipated to vary in different locations based on exposure, socioeconomic characteristics, and physical conditions. Social vulnerabilities identified include exposure to extreme heat and poor air quality, while physical vulnerabilities are concerned are around wildfires and landslides, as well as extreme heat and drought in our open space recreation areas. Considering the CCVA analysis, a new goal has been written for the safety element, to reduce social and physical vulnerabilities resulting from the increased risks of climate change. New policies and programs have also been crafted related to cooling infrastructure, building resilience, access to public information, and water management. And now I'll turn it back over to Dennis to tell us about a few additional updates.
Thank you, Teresa. Well, updates to the disaster preparedness and recovery emergency response section include updates to the overview, local conditions, and summary sections, and the revisions to the emergency response routes. New policies and programs were provided in this section with the goal to maintain a high-level emergency preparedness, such as strengthen evacuation communications, resources to vulnerable populations, traffic management, and identification of single-access neighborhoods. Minor revisions to the following sections such as hazardous materials, terrorism, civil disturbance and crime, dangerous animals and plants, and to overall these sections, there are minor cleanups just to, you know, just the overall, the overview and local conditions of these sections, and had very minor updates. Of the safety element maps, the most notable update is the addition of the single-access neighborhood map, which was included as plate number four with a, of the safety element update. And to continue on to public outreach efforts of the safety element, I'm going to transfer this or turn this over to Vilia Zemetidis.
Yes. So at the start of the, at the start of the update process, the consultant team and staff hosted safety element outreach booths at four city events. Those included Earth Day event at Verdugo Park back in April. We also hosted a booth at the Fire Service Day event, which is the middle picture, Station 21, on May 1st, a booth at the Building and Safety Open House hosted here on City Hall on May 15th, and at the Climate Cafe Open House at the Central Library on May 18th. Thank you. The final, in addition to the public outreach in spring of 2024, the final draft was prepared by Ringcon and staff. Project information on the update was posted on the city's website, again, that would be www.glandaleplan.com. There were also social media blasts on Instagram, on the city's and on the division's website. The draft was finalized and presented online for public comment from November 18th to December 18th for a full 30-day review period. We also had email blasts to all of the glendaleplan.com subscribers, and just to give everyone, you know, a plug for this particular website, we asked that if anyone's interested in learning more about any of these updates, please sign up and become a subscriber on glendaleplan.com. But again, an email blast was sent out to the glendaleplan.com subscribers and to the planning contact list that included representatives of all of the neighborhood groups, and this would be for the public comment period. The public notice for this particular Planning Commission mail meeting was publicized per code in the Glendale newspaper, and again, the email blasts were sent out to all of the various interested parties as well. To date, we have not received any letters for tonight's meeting. Next slide, thank you. The updates to the safety element are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. There are two exemptions that we used. One would be the fact that this is basically a policy modification with updates in compliance with a government code to address items related to climate change, evacuation, and wildfire risks. So there are no anticipated significant events on the environment, and any of the minor actions specified in the safety element updates, such as traffic signal upgrades, would be an exemption as an existing facilities criteria. With that, the final draft of the 2025 update was submitted to the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, which is affectionately called CAL FIRE, as required by state law. CAL FIRE reviewed and approved the draft on January 21st. The final draft has been submitted for your review and for your recommendations this evening. Staff is in the process of adding photographs to the safety element. We are not going to be doing any text changes, but we are going to be adding some photographs for the final draft going to City Council, just because it is a very text-heavy document. So if, with any comments that the Planning Commission may have, this final draft will be presented for adoption by City Council on April 1st. This concludes staff's presentation. Teresa, Dennis, and I are all available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, staff, for a great presentation. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for the staff? Commissioner Fuentes?
Just want to thank you for a very comprehensive report, very well done and well understood. Thank you.
Just one quick question. Regarding the new segment, element, environmental justice element, I'm sure there was a trigger for that. Was it a new regulation or?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Nazarian, state law requires a, an environmental justice, either an element or that the other general plan elements be updated to address the environmental justice criteria whenever there are two or more general plan elements being updated. And since we are right now in the process of updating our land use element and our mobility/circulation element, that triggers the requirement that the city address environmental justice, and the city has chosen to do so in a separate standalone element.
Thank you. So the last update for our general plan was 2003 or?
Yes. Planning Commissioner Nazarian, this is only for the safety element. All of the other elements have been adopted at various points throughout the general plan history.
And one last question. During November 18 to December 18, how was the engagement? How many letters or emails? What did you get from public or anyone?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Nazarian. We received two letters from the public. One was from beyond the borders, and one was from an individual who was specifically concerned with the climate change section and concerned that increased housing density could exacerbate those problems of climate change. Neither was against the project, but they were providing comments specifically on the new climate change section.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do we have any callers or anyone in the meeting? Just for the record, we don't have any callers.
We do not have any callers.
And we don't have any speakers. I don't see any cards as well.
No.
I have a few quick questions. I think overall, it was fairly straightforward. My first question is, in terms of what's being asked of the Planning Commission, ultimately, we're just, we're basically being asked to approve of this amendment and that it aligns with the regulations imposed by the state?
Correct. Chair Pro Tem, Pro Tem Krocjan, the Planning Commission is being asked to make a recommendation to the City Council, so the Planning Commission can either recommend that it be adopted by City Council as-is, or if you would like to provide comments, we can address those comments and further those on to City Council for their consideration as well.
A few quick questions. I was, and by the way, Exhibit 6, which outlined the changes, was very helpful, so thank you for including that in the staff report. In looking at the outline, most of the language that's proposed is worded in a way that says the city shall consider establishing, as opposed to the city will. Is that so that the city isn't bound legally to the element? And how is the city going to go about enforcing to make sure some of these things happen? By way of example, in our Seismic and Geological Hazard section, 2.2.1 states, "The city shall consider establishing a regular inspection and maintenance cycle for existing physical landslide and debris flow defenses." So I guess my question is, how does it go from a consideration to like a practical application in the real world on the field?
Yes. Chair Pro Tem Krocjan, when there is a shall, the safety element would require the city to address that particular action. When there is a consideration, there is the recommendation that the city go to any lengths possible to address that particular action, and that would depend on workload, depend on budget, depend on staff availability. So provided that these resources are available, that particular action would be enforceable.
Understood. And is there like a set timeline in terms of reporting back to council or any of our various commissions that staff is going to come back, you know, once a year and say, this is kind of how we're implementing the new safety element, or is that not a consideration at this point? at this point in time?
The timelines are actually addressed at the end of the safety element. I believe it is Exhibit number, I believe, Table, Table number three, the program implementation schedule. So that actually lists all of the various policies and programs in the safety element, the department which is responsible for addressing those programs and policies, and also the timeline. So that table would address the first part of your question, the second part of your question, which is whether we come back on a regular basis to, to discuss the implementation. Unlike the housing element, which the housing element requires us to identify our compliance with the various housing element programs, and we are responsible to providing that information of compliance to the Housing and Community Development Department at the state level, that is not something that is currently mandated for the safety element.
Understood. Thank you. I don't have further comment at this point, so I think we can close the questioning and open for deliberation.
I can make a motion for recommending the approval of general plan amendment and new element.
I'm happy to second. So congratulations on your first motion.
Thank you.
Can we have roll call, please?
I'm not sure if we would, and I apologize, I would look to legal, does the Chair Pro Tem have to pass the gavel to make a second or not?
Well, okay. One of the other commissioners is second, yeah.
Okay.
I'll just second it for, for the sake of.
Yes.
My apologies.
You forget.
It would be the resolution that was distributed to you, identifying the SEQA exemption, a summary of the element updates, and I believe we would be changing the section at the bottom of the resolution, which with these comments, and so it'd be with no comments or as submitted. But knowing that the final draft will be including photographs for City Council.
Do you have to read this?
Thank you. So I have, it's up to you. I have a motion by Planning Commissioner Nazarian and a second by Commissioner Fuentes, and I believe roll call, if you'd like to do that. Thank you.
Roll call vote. Commissioner Nazarian?
Yes.
Commissioner Fuentes?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
And Chairperson Chakchian?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Would staff like us to read the resolution, or are we okay? We're okay. With that, we have no more new business, so that brings me to the next item on our agenda, which is Community Development Department updates. Do we have any updates from staff?
No updates at this time, just that our next commission meeting will be March 19, and we do have one item scheduled that evening so far.
So we have a...
Yeah. It's going to be an appeal, but we'll send those agendas out the week before.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I'd like...
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. That's great.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.